Leanne, I need my gavel. It is 6:01 and I want to thank everybody for coming to the town council meeting this Tuesday, September the 23rd. I will call this meeting to order. The invocation today will be by Alderman Boudreaux, followed by the pledge of allegiance from Alderman Contoyes.
Let us pray. Before we start this meeting, Lord, we pray that you will send the Holy Spirit to guide us in the decisions we will make. Never let us lose sight of your gratefulness, of our gratefulness, to you and all that you provide us with. Provide us with necessities to keep our residents safe and comfortable as they go about their lives in this extraordinary town. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to gather and work together toward a common goal. Thank you for your faithfulness and provision in our lives. Thank you, Lord, for each person in this meeting and the unique talents and perspectives they bring. Lord, we pray that you help us to grow in our knowledge of your teachings. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would remind everyone to silence your phones while we're in the meeting tonight. All right. Mayor's announcements. Got several here. The truck and tractor showcase was attended very well out at the park. I must say, if you like hot weather and lots of sun, it was a lot of fun. Not a whole lot of breeze, but there were a whole lot of happy kids. And we had refreshments and food available and a jump house and a state trooper was there and lots of really great tractors and vehicles. I was able to take my three grandchildren and they thoroughly enjoyed it and being with Cleco and being able to get into the bucket truck and put on the big gloves. So it was great. It was really a nice, nice thing. The Opry, I understand, went very well the other night, well attended. And we have two more Oprys that'll be coming, Saturday, October the 18th, and November the 21st. So be sure to put those on your calendar and be looking for the alignment of all the acts that'll be there. Finally, I have an update on our mayor, Dan Curtis. He is at home resting. He was released from the hospital on Monday. I do understand from Teresa, his wife, that he was able to finally, after one year, put pressure onto his right foot and move. It was quite an extensive surgery lasting a little over six hours. So, but he is, he's resting well at home and we wish him Godspeed on his recovery. At this point, I will call for any agenda modifications.
Roll call first.
Oh, excuse me, roll call.
Alderman Boudreaux?
Here.
Alderman Contoyes?
Here.
Alderman Sausage?
Here.
Alderman Patterson?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Control is Mayor Protem and Alderman Tom Place.
Okay. Now I will call for agenda modifications.
Okay. Do I have to make a motion?
Well firstly, it's...
I would like to talk some more about what I talked about last meeting with the amendments to chapter five about the sewage. I'd like to move on to the old business, if I could.
Or you can do it in open.
I can do it in open?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll do it in open.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
I'd like to call for an agenda modification. I don't know if this, I know we haven't discussed it as a group, but just as a board, either send Dan a plant, flowers, something, get well. I support the board.
Okay.
I don't think we need a resolution for that, but I think it's something that we should do as a board.
Okay, absolutely.
Who pays for it? I think Mayor Protem should pay for it.
I'll pay, I'll pay for it and send everybody a bill. How's that? I'll just drop it out.
Yeah, well, I think we can all pitch in whatever help y'all want to do it.
Sure.
I think it'd be a good idea.
I'll look into that first thing tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
All righty. I'm asking for the acceptance of August the 19th, 2025 town council meeting.
So made.
Second.
First and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. All righty, July 2025 financial report.
Good evening. So you should have the July financial statements with you guys. You do have the full set of financials, but we'll probably really just go over the budget to actual. So seven months have ended. Also, keep in mind that this is based on the original budget. So this, these financial statements do not include the amended budget that I think was discussed with you guys. So, starting with the general fund. So on line 30 are your total operating revenues. So as of end of July 31st of 2025, you have operating revenues of $934,000. That's about 65% of the budget has been collected through July 31st. Also, just to keep in mind, July 31st is 58% of the year is completed. A couple items of note, there's a couple asterisks that are included on here that let you know that some of those revenues are 100% collected. That's going to be the autism event and the push mode parade income. You do have some dedicated revenues of $552,000. A lot of these monies have been collected based on the expenditures. However, for that, the grant income from Louisiana Outdoor Forever, you did receive some additional funding, but not until September. On the expenditure side, we'll start off with public safety. So your total public, total public safety salary and benefits on line 41 is just at budget at 58% and the total expenditures for that is $148,000. The total public safety for other expenditures, that's on line 54, and that too is pretty much right there on budget at 59% or 300, I mean $33,000. On the clerk accord expenditures on line 59, your total for salaries and benefits is $11,000 or 55% of the budget. And then your total clerk accord expenditures on line 64 is 897 or 26%. On your general government salaries and benefits, that's on line 70, it's at $310,000 or 58%. On your governmental expenditures on line 81 is $55,000 or 38% of expenditures of that budget has been met. On your total governmental expenditures, that's on line 112, you had, you've spent thus far $185,000 or 57% of the budget. On the capital outlays that is funded by grants, so on the Louisiana Outdoor Forever program, there is one more draw that is left to be done, but you should be completed by year end and it looks like that will stay on budget. On the SS4A grant, that is done, so that should have had an asterisk next to that. So that's completely done. And on your trace lighting, that's almost done. There's a couple of minor expenditures that need to be, will be incurred, but most of that is done and should stay within budget. So your total general fund...
I'm sorry, Michelle, for all, for all three, 18, 19, 118 through 120, stay the same?
119 and 120, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So then on line 129 are your total general fund expenditures of 1.5 million or 69%. And that is going to be a little bit higher than that 58% and a lot of that is due to those capital outlays that are being expended now versus evenly throughout the year. On your utility fund, so your gas revenues on line 70, thus far through July, you guys have collected $496,000 or just under $500,000 and that's at 76% of budget. Your water revenues on line 16 are $259,000 or 51% budget. So it is trending lower and I think there will be a budget amendment for that. Your sewer revenues on line 24 are $379,000 or 48% of budget. So similar to water, it is trending a little bit lower, so there will be a slight budget amendment for that area. Your garbage revenues on line 30 are $248,000 or 58% collected, 58% of your budget. Then on line 36 are your other revenues, so you've collected thus for, thus far $94,000 or 54% of budget. So your total operating revenues, you've collected thus far in your utility fund are 1.4 million, almost 1.5 million or 58%. Got a couple of your dedicated revenues that you've collected a little bit from there, but not significant. On the expenditure side...
Excuse me, Michelle?
Yes.
This is through July?
Correct.
For utilities, you know how we were trending the first four months? Are we slowing down the last few months?
No, no, I mean, because you did have...
So I looked at it between June and July and we're roughly trending about the same percentage down than what our projected revenue was, 7% down on our water sales and 9 to 10% down on our sewer, but it's staying steady, so we don't expect that to, to have any dramatic change.
What do you mean staying steady, steady declining at 7 to 9%?
So in June, we collected 43%, so that was 7% less than what we projected in the budget. And for sewer, we collected 41%, which was down 9%.
Well, how does that compare to the rate increase in percentages that was calculated into a budget?
I do not have those figures for you. I simply tracked it from last month to this month to make sure we were staying steady and we were not seeing a increase in decline.
Thank you.
So we're still just seven or nine percent under?
Yes.
In July, so it's not compounded?
That's correct.
That's okay. Thank you. On your, just some general operating expenses for the utility, the total of that is on line 60 and that's $170,000 or 68%. Some items of note is on the accounting and audit. Your audit was paid for, so that's going to increase that, over that 58% because of that. Your billing, and billing is on line 45, your billing expense that is trending a little bit higher, it's the cost to print the bills and then print those late notices. So I think there is going to be just a slight budget amendment for that. And then probably the bigger one is that software subscription expense, that's for that Tyler technology, so that, as you noticed here on line 53, is at 190%. So that is going to be a budget amendment. And then the last item that you'll notice is on line 59, that's those credit card processing fees, and I think we had talked about that in the past, where those fees were not budgeted in this fund, so that will have to be corrected with the budget amendment. So then on line 65, your gas salaries and benefits, you have $82,000, almost $83,000, and that's at 57%. And then your other gas operating expenses on line 70 is at 346 or 78%. And the main driver of that is two items, one being the natural gas purchases, so that's trending higher than what, trending higher than what was budgeted, but the revenues are also trending higher than what was budgeted. And then on those gas reports and training, that's not something that y'all had budgeted for and that's what's causing that amount to be out. On your garbage operating expenses on line 74, the total is $228,000 or 57% of budget. And then your water expenses, starting with water sales and benefits on line 79, is $127,000 or 54% of budget. Your other water expenses are at 45% on line 83, at 24%. So your total for water operating expenses is 172 or 40%.
Leanne, question for you. Line 80, you budgeted $150,000. You've only spent $12,000, 8.2%, and that is for water repair and maintenance. Do you foresee anything by year's end of spending that much money?
Isn't that, was that the Pointevent street water?
Yes, ma'am.
So we had a project that we scheduled, well, anticipated that we most likely are not going to pursue this year, right?
That's correct.
Has that got anything to do with the water tower?
No, sir.
Which project did y'all plan on doing that...
Expansion of the Pointevent street water lines.
And that's not going to happen in 2025?
We don't anticipate that it will.
So are you saying there's $138,000 free there?
Yes, sir, that was addressed in the, it's not...
Because we have the budget amended.
Free.
I know.
Reallocated. We allocate, we allocate.
You can reallocate $138,000 there?
Yes.
Okay.
And that was done, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
For Alderman Boudreaux, the water well tower expenditure...
Line 82.
Line 82, that was the repair that we had to do to the tower. That was a total of $19,200 that we spent in July. That was for the repair and also the five-year inspection of the tank. There is some information in your packets that were handed out earlier last week pertaining to the findings of that inspection and recommended repairs for that tower, but that is not in this budget at this point.
Thank you.
So some of those reallocations will be addressed in the budget amendment because we found other expenses that we didn't anticipate that we'll have to use some of them.
That's where I'm going.
Yeah, because I was going to say the same thing. Some of the things we skipped over was the item 69, the gas reports and training, which looks like it's at 221% and item 78, payroll and taxes, I think y'all just modified how that was being shown, but, I mean, basically, it's not that we have free money there, it's being spent somewhere else in the same budget. So all of those things will be in the reallocation?
Yes. Are we going to be doing the water tower in 2025 or 2026?
No, that will have to be budgeted into a capital project for 2026.
Because we do have expenses for the water tower that we are going to have to provide funds for.
Pretty extensive.
And then on line 89 are your sewer salaries and benefits, $126,000 or 53% of budget. And then your other sewer operating expenses on line 97 of $140,000 or 38%. If you, just an item of note on line 92 is equipment repair and maintenance. I think that was the vacuum truck and some service of generators that occurred, so it's just something that went over budget a little bit.
And the next line, Leanne, 93, is that going to come to fruition?
Sewer repair, main is at 110.
We aren't expecting any major, or we don't have anything that we're aware of scheduled for our sewer repairs and maintenance. Again, of most of these water and sewer, gas and garbage expenditures were revised in the proposed budget amendment, accounting for those unexpected expenses such as the gas training and allocating some money that we do not expect to have to spend by the end of the year. But I believe I was conservative on that with the sewer especially because it's expensive if a sewer repair does occur. So I did leave, I believe we calculated some extra money still left in that in the proposed budget amendment. Sorry?
Was it 50? I don't remember all the figures through the amendment. I mean, I've got my notes, but I'm just trying to add up in my head. We've got 138, maybe 50,000 from there.
Actually, that's line 85. So we didn't have any major repairs, but in the footnotes that I gave you for line 71 and 85 of the proposed budget amendment, I explained that we were actually increasing the funding for any anticipated major sewer project expenditures, so we kind of just took what we had and we were not expecting to see expenditures in water and we moved them down to sewer, so we do have some remaining in that budget if we do incur a major sewer or if you want to discuss the...
We can look at it when we get to the amendment.
Yes, sir.
Amendment later tonight. Thank you.
So then on line 108 is your non-operating expenses of $180,000, so your total expenditures for the utility is 1.4 million or 56% of budget. On your public works, so on line nine is your total revenues of 800 and, sorry, $658,000 or about 60%. Your lighting expenditures on line 12 is at $21,000 or 65%. And it's those lighting, it's the item, line 10, which is really just trending higher, that's your utility expenses and that's what's kind of causing that to be higher than that 58%.
And that's consistently higher?
Always has been. Yes, it always has been.
Then on line 16, your expenses of 29, almost $3,000, $3,000 or 2%. Then on line 23, your repairs and maintenance expenditures is 84% or 24% of budget. Then on line 28 are your total public work salaries and benefits of 119 or 59% of budget. Your other public work operating expenses on line 45 is $106,000 or 75% of budget. So a couple of items that kind of have thrown this higher than that 58%, if you notice your insurance expense is at 126%. You know, the, the budget was too low and it was based on prior year's budget, which had a credit on it, and then you also had a 6% increase in your insurance. So a budget amendment would have to be made for that one. And then the hazardous tree inspection and the dumpster garbage disposal, those are trending high and those have been discussions in the past. And then on line 44 is the subscription expense for Tyler Technology. So a matter of all of those items that is kind of throwing your other, other operating expenses higher than that 58%. But on line 46 is your total public work operating expenditures of $226,000 or 66% of budget. You do have a little bit of capital outlay, that's only 68, I mean, 23% of budget on line 49 or about 68%.
Would we anticipate spending on Level Bourbon by year's end? How much of the 269,000?
I didn't do a contract analysis for that. I'll be glad to get it to you to see what we have left on Level Bourbon.
I'm just trying to see where we have money left over. Okay.
I think it's going to be on budget, I think it's going to be another 200,000.
Okay, thank you.
Then on your recreation fund, so on line nine is your total revenues for recreation. You have $117,000 or 65% that has been collected. One item of note is that Fourth of July celebration, the donations and income that should have been asterisk because I think you have collected all of those funds. You do have some dedicated revenue of $150,000 and you've collected 100% of that. So your total revenues on line 13 is $267,000 or 81% of budget. On line 18 is your park and rec salaries and benefits at $17,000 or 57% of budget. And your other park and rec expenditures on line 23 is $15,000 or 46% of budget.
Excuse me, didn't that, do you want to address the parking rec situation with 5%? This is one of the required amendments that we have to do. We are amending a lot of things, but this is one of the ones that, at this stage, have exceeded the 5% that we need to, that requires us.
Yes, in the instrument that we gave you, the initial worksheet, you will see that park and recs is actually at, trending at 12.3%. So that is above that 5% that we're allowed, so that is a necessary budget amendment that we need to get passed to account for that excess in the fund.
And that's for the entire fund, not just the line?
Okay, that's okay. So on line 24 is your total park and rec expenditures at $32,000 or 51% of budget. Then on line 29 is your museum expenditures at $10,000 or 26% of budget. On line 34 is your pharma's market salaries and benefits at $22,000 or 62% of budget. And then on line 37 is your other pharma market expenditures at $3,400 or 46% of budget. So on line 38 is your total farmer market expenditures of $25,000 or 59% of budget. And then the total other expenditures on line 46 is $29,000 or 90% of budget. And that's going to be where you'll see the Fourth of July celebration expense is 100% of the expense, the other event expense is 100%, so you should not have too many more expenditures in this line item. You have a capital outlay expense of $145,000, which is 97% of your budget, so your total park and rec overall is at $244,000 or at 74% of budget. And then on the cemetery fund, your total revenues on line three is 16, almost $17,000 or 54% of budget. And then on your expenditures, line eight is salary and benefits at $4,000 or right at 58%. And then your other cemetery expenses are at $8,000 or 33% of budget. So your total expenditures are, your total other, other cemetery expenditures are at $12,000 or 39%. And then the last fund is your debt service fund. So your total revenues are $143,000 or 99% of budget. And then on the expenditure side, your principal payment for one of your bonds was already paid, that's at $40,000, so that's 100%. The 2014 general obligation bond, one interest payment has been made at $3,000, the other one still needs to be made. On the 2020, the principal payments, professional fees and interest were not budgeted in the debt service since these were previously reported in the utility fund. Those will then have been moved here, so this will be, need to be a budget amendment to... So this will be, need to be a budget amendment to include those principal payments. The principal payment has.
Who was that for again? Leanne? Twenty-twenty?
The general obligation bond, bonds that.
The twenty-twenty was what?
Twenty-twenty was tied to that five mills, and it was.
Are you asking which line item?
No, she knows, she knows.
You mean what purpose of that money was for?
It wasn't the six point three.
I think it was three things.
Improvements, I think we had, the twenty-nineteen was for town hall. And I think roads as well.
So the twenty-twenty, according to the packet that I gave you all, was for sewer water system improvements, constructing, paving, improving, and resurfacing public streets. It was a million-dollar obligation bond split between citizens and.
It was a million dollars, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And that was passed in January twenty-twenty.
Right, right, ma'am, thank you.
That's all I have unless you have any questions.
No, we're going to go into the amendment. We're going to go into the amendment next. Oh, I'm sorry.
First, we have the.
The first new business is consideration, consider adoption of a resolution drafted by Alderman Boudreaux seeking injunctive relief to prevent Land Ranch Recovery Center from allowing occupancy until it's connected to the Abita Springs sewer system.
Okay, in light of, in light of some recent information that I got, I would like to table that resolution until further notice.
Thank you, sir.
First?
First or the second?
All right, I'm second. Open discussion.
I'll second if that's necessary.
Still, still working on my rules of order. No public comment? Call for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All vote? Okay, number two. Discussion slash introduction of instrument twenty twenty-five dash zero nine dash zero zero two. An ordinance amending, amending ordinance five fifty-one an operating budget of revenue and expenditure for the year beginning January one, twenty twenty-five and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Now, this is a, we can have a quick discussion on this, but this is an introduction. All this was set out and let everybody take a look at it. Are there any, any hot points that we?
Yeah, I'd like to go through it. First of all, who composed this packet?
I did.
By yourself?
No, sir. I consulted with the accountant, with Leanne, with Kristen, with Dan.
This is the type of information that we've always longed and yearn for. Thank you very much for compiling this. This is not, this was not compiled in thirty minutes.
No, sir.
Yes, thank you very much for doing this.
Thank you.
We're going to get our finances straight eventually. So thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Do you want me to start?
You've already started.
You've already started.
Good, keep going.
Just hot points. Can we do that, or do you want to go in depth?
Oh, we're going to go in depth. This is discussion, isn't it? Or is it introduction?
Well, I said it was introduction, so are we going to have?
It says discussion, introduction.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to have, you know.
We're going to have another discussion in two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay.
If there are any hot points.
Okay, hot points.
Yeah.
The first thing is.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but we thought that we might be able to introduce tonight and possibly adopt on the seventh, but that's not going to be possible. It won't be until the twenty-first of August.
Right.
So you'll have another meeting in between tonight and the adoption to have further discussion.
Okay. The document that Michelle just went through, this document, all the salaries are within fifty-eight percent, which where we should be after seven months. But in this document, we're asking for pay raises, salary increases. So please review that in a, in a number of areas.
What I did to do the salaries and wages, benefits, and everything associated with that was I took the twenty twenty-four budget, twenty twenty-four actual, twenty twenty-five budget, the last presented financial statements of June thirtieth, and estimated through August thirty-first. And then I took that as an average for the remainder of the year. I'm not aware of any increase that was built into the budget. It was strictly based on actual expenditures.
And I, and I appreciate you sharing that, but we did, when, I mean, I didn't vote for this budget, but the budget that was approved had a three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar increase over prior year salaries total. So now we're asking for more.
It was, we did the, yeah, you redistributed, your percentage worksheet was included in your packet, and that was what was used.
But still does some increases, okay.
I can go back and get you a, a complete breakdown, but without knowing that that was a concern, I'm, I'm not prepared to.
I would just say we've got two weeks, just highlights. Page five, line thirty-seven, the last paragraph. Line thirty-five, as noted prior to budget presentation, the twenty twenty-five budget for interest income in the general fund was based on twenty twenty-four revenues from accounts, and they were revised from the, removed from the general fund during the separation of funds in March of twenty twenty-five. Where were they transferred to? Line thirty-five, I'm sorry, page five, the explanation for line thirty-five.
Yeah, I think there was some discussions over the presentation of the January to the June budget whereby the general interest was trending much lower than what was budgeted. And the explanation that was given is that the twenty twenty-four actual numbers were used when the general fund was actually what is now known as the utility fund. And so when they finally got all of the accounts separated into the separate funds, that interest was not allocated because it was budgeted to the general fund.
Gotcha, thank you. The other thing, just a note, the twenty twenty-five budget had a budget of three hundred and eighty-six thousand for what we're going to be calling now public safety and judicial revenues. But the revenues, for some reason, in this budget, and that's one of the reasons I've looked at months back, didn't equal, I'm sorry, the expenditures did not equal the revenues.
I can't speak for.
Three forty-four, so I just highlights stuff. So that's one thing we need to address.
That's in the general fund, and it's the dedicated public safety and judicial revenue and citations. And when we reviewed that.
It's line forty-one, guys. I'm on page forty, line forty-one of the general fund.
Yes, sir. And so when I re-review the numbers and put together the packet for the proposed budget amendment, we did add that detail so that you now know that what is dedicated public safety and judicial is being spent for public safety and judicial.
Just for the board's recommendation, it's line forty-one and line one thirty-seven. That's three eighty-six in the budget, but they didn't have, the expenditures didn't equal the revenues. Anybody got a magnifying glass?
It, it should be standard issue up here.
Utility fund, no, that's why, that's why I downloaded on my computer so I could read it. Utility fund, page eleven. Line. One oh three, professional and engineering, the budget is fifty thousand. Only spent fifteen thousand, six hundred to date, oh, I'm sorry, after seven months. Or is this, I'm sorry, twenty-three thousand after eight months, unaudited, that is. But we're asking for thirty thousand more when we haven't even spent fifty percent of what we budget.
Yes, sir. In the footnotes on page nine, that is explained. We increased that to incorporate twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars in expenditures that we reallocated from the general fund. We explained that in the general fund notes. We have a certain bill that comes in that just says town engineer on it, and that was just being put into the general fund. But a review of those from January first revealed that there were a lot of expenditures related to the sewer infrastructure, the sewer capacity. There were even some related to level in Bervant. And so we took funds out of the general fund and put them to the utility fund where they should be coded, and then we put extra in there because we do not have a final figure on what the testing on Abita Meadows is going to cost, and we're going to need that in the budget for this year.
All right, I just couldn't, okay. I mean, I, I read your message and everything, but when I read the twelve thousand and then saw a thirty thousand increase when we hadn't spent fifty percent, I had a question, okay.
Yes, man, we allocated funds and then added for, for future expected expenditures for Abita Meadows testing.
All right, this is a, maybe a pet peeve of my own, but. Revenue should be revolving revenue, not to include grant alone revenue. I realize it's itemized out, but some of this, like utility fund, it's in their total budget. And I realize utilities, or the sewer plant is utilities, but we want to really want to separate out these grant expenses. The predecessor was opposed to separating this out, and that's when the public works, shared sales tax went into public works. If we could just make a conscious effort, if everybody agrees, to separate out grants and loans. You know, when you do your calculations for salaries to budget, you can't do calculations, salaries to budget, and include six million dollars in grant money. It offsets your percentages. So if we could, if we could take out that six million or whatever the grant money that received in the twenty twenty-five budget and completely separate it out from the total of utility operating expenses.
Yes, sir, that's a, that's a valid point, but before I did any changes to these, I would certainly want to consult with the accountant to see how they will prepare those types of reports in the future, and where will they be showing that entirely separate? Or how they recommend that we present that information to you?
Everything that I've Googled for the state of Louisiana has shown that budgets, grant money and loan monies are separated out, they're not counted for in their general funding of utilities and things like that.
Yeah, I don't want to stop you, but I'm going to stop you. I just want to echo that because that's something that this board has been asking for several years. So we're really trying to understand, what is our base budget versus what happens when we get these big influxes of a million or two million or five million dollars? And it really throws us off, year to year, trying to report when, you know, it, it just obfuscates the problem, you know? So I would really ask for us to find a solution and consult with the CPA so that we can do that. Correct.
Right, it's not recurring money. And when you do the breakdown of salaries versus budget, it's a twenty, thirty percent difference in the percentage. Brings us down to single digits when that is not reality.
I believe so, because I think specifically I had to look back at Covington, and I don't know if it was Mandeville as well, but I looked at other places at their specific budgets and saw that they pulled them out separate. And, you know, when we're going through the last several years of how to create a budget before we had a CPA, I was just looking at how everybody else was doing it and specifically saw requests from other municipalities to do that same thing.
And, and the other thing is, DHHM works for us. We don't work for them. So if that's something that we want, they need to figure out how to incorporate legally and make sure there's proper accounting. It's something that we have asked for for years, and we just, for some reason, we can't.
I will make sure that we have those conversations. Again, I'm not an accountant. You're being presented financial statements from the accountant, although she absolutely does work for the town versus the other. She has the expertise. I do not.
And she's, and she is phenomenal to work with. She's adult, she really is.
We will definitely have that conversation and express the board's desire to see that separated.
Thank you.
Leanne, in your new position, are you still doing cemetery? Who is doing cemetery? The cemetery is going to fill up eventually. And as it gets fuller, we're going to have less and less sales. I don't know why. I opposed this before in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Can we kindly take, for the remainder of this year, get the salaries out of cemetery? It's never been in there in the history of Abita Springs until twenty twenty-three came, and they decided to take percentage of salaries, of Leanne's salary, and take it out of the cemetery because she was handling the cemetery plots. Is there any reason for that?
I think we, we made a note to have a discussion on that for the twenty twenty-six and possibly set up a very fair administrative fee that would be charged to the cemetery. There, there is administrative duties we have to track. We, we sell the plots. We have to make sure they're recorded in our program, you know, the funerals and the burials and things like that. So, you know, the cemetery does have administrative costs, but it may be more a, a fair method of setting up an administrative fee that the town would charge the cemetery annually or monthly instead of having a portion of the salaries and benefits.
Yeah, we might base it on a different parameter, maybe how many plot sales we have within a month or how much administrative tasks we have to do within a month. But, you know, it is an operational cost. I, I don't know whether or not it should be omitted completely, any administrative cost, because it's not really a, a fair representation of what it takes to run the cemetery. And you probably do want to see, you know, whether or not the cemetery costs more money than it takes in.
All right, let me partially contradict what I just said.
The thing about the cemetery is we're, we're going to have to have perpetual care on that thing eventually. It's filling up pretty fast. When you have salary and benefits, I call it payroll, and that's taken away from it, from the money that we need to be saving up for the perpetual care. And the fact is, it's part of the salary anyway. You know, what difference does it make where that, where you prescribe that money to? But if you, if you want to do an administrative fee, that's pretty good. I like that. But taking the benefits out of that particular fund would really help it.
There are different ways to, to treat it, most certainly, and we can discuss that. You do want to attribute an expense to where that expense goes. However we do that, it's going to be, you know, up to your discretion.
The expense is the expense, but.
Yeah.
I can work on doing like a ten-year projection of knowing what funds we have in there and what expenditures we're seeing in plot sales over the next ten years and see what our ending fund balance may be at that point, and if it's sufficient to do perpetual maintenance from that point. There may be some hard decisions that had to be made, but we can certainly look like a ten-year projection.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't charge a perpetual care fee to the people that buy plots now.
Oh, no, you can't.
But we do have to, we do have to care for the cemetery. And then if you do charge a perpetual care fee, I think that that's going to increase the standard of care as well. Because if somebody has to pay for something, their expectation is going to be that it's kept to a high standard.
Right. We, we just have to build up a fund for that.
Yes, sir. And if your ten-year projection is not.
It's just part of your job duty.
Right.
You're getting paid for it anyway.
But you don't want to attribute it to, like, you don't want to put that payroll and attribute it to something else that it's not associated with because it's a burden on whatever that activity is.
I mean, payroll is payroll, no matter what you're doing, you know? And you're still getting the same line.
We do try to fairly allocate the the salaries over the duties that each person has, and we do review that pretty frequently, especially just recently as duties changed, as people moved into different positions and took over different tasks. You know, we we allocate that in a percentage over all of the funds except for debt service that the town manages. And so my, I would prefer to do like a 10-year projection. And if you're not seeing enough in the funds after 10 years, then maybe a consideration of increasing the cost of each of the plots at some point in the future.
You're going to want to see the health and stability of every activity that this town undertakes. And so that's why we want to attribute revenue and expenses in the proper categories. But but there are different ways to approach that.
Yeah, it's a different, it's a different situation with this one because eventually we're going to have to spend some money on it. Okay, thank you.
And just an update for the board. I was able to meet with the mayor, Danette, Leanne, and Michelle. And the $51,000 that was borrowed decades ago from the cemetery, Danette, correct me if I'm wrong, we've paid about $21,000 so far to year to date due to the increase in expenses that are coming for the sewer. My suggestion was to stop paying that this year and to pay the remaining $30,000 over five years. And that would be paid in January when we receive our avalorum. That would be paid back then. Any opposition? And that'll free us up for the $30,000 for the remainder of this year at least.
And that burden won't hit us all in one year if we spread it over. It's been, like you said, decades since it was incurred, and we just are making an effort to try and pay that back. So we certainly can take some time to do that.
Am I, I think my, maybe my last, I'm sorry, this is the one on the debt service. I just circled it on here where Michelle went through that. Angie, why are you here?
She was trying to sneak out.
How'd you know I was turning to Parks and Recreation? You have ESP? What is our current volume weekly at the farmer's market? Correct.
I mean, it does differ weekend to weekend, but we're doing on average about 50 right now.
Okay. Is it slower than normal?
Some of it is. It's starting to pick up now.
I can't disclose where I'm getting all my fresh vegetables from, but a friend, I've gotten fresh stuff the last four weekends because Covington Farmers Market has been slow. So I didn't know if that was affecting our, it means that ours is slow too, but they're saying it's slow in Covington as well.
It's, so we kind of network with some other farmers markets in the area as well as across the country. And it is, it's, it's slow. The the cost of people to buy products or, you know, some to to whatever they're farming with is going up exponentially. And these people are just not, they're not being able to produce what they used to. And the cost of doing their, their, maybe some of these are side gigs for some people. It's just not worth it. People are not buying at the farmer's market either quite as much. But it has increased since probably the beginning of September.
We saw an increase in new vendors requesting to come in after our farmer's market got a gold award. And so I think that brought to the attention to some people that it might be worth it to come to and attend and also to be a part of our farmer's market.
Isn't it typically busier this, in the fall?
Fall and early spring are.
When the weather's nice.
Yeah. Drastically different than summer and winter. We know our winter, we're, we get away with a lot longer, we get the whole people out. But the spring and the fall are, I mean, it's, it's night day compared to winter and summer. It's just 110 degrees and it's too hot to go out. But then I feel like summer and spring will make up for that downfall, for that downness in the summer.
We've reduced some expenses when it comes to the farmer's market too.
I saw that.
We we've been working to reduce some of the the overtime for Angie and Taylor to have to go out there and working with some of the vendors to assist with, you know, keeping an eye on things out there. And then in addition to that, I think the expense associated with the music has been decreased quite a bit. Angie, do you remember when we made that adjustment with the?
It was, I want to say it was in March, April.
So we continually look at how we can make the market more efficient and still providing that community service to the public because people really enjoy it.
Who from Town Hall is responsible for the farmer's market every weekend? I read in your job description, you're there one weekend a month. Who's the other three?
Well, Taylor and I are alternating it once every other month. So she'll work one on one weekend a month, and then I'll work it the following month for a weekend. And then we do have a vendor who oversees it on Sunday only. He's not making maps or anything. He's just overseeing the vendor setup and and kind of plays the middle hand between us and the vendors for that.
So he's not doing any administrative work, but he's present on that Sunday in the event that a situation arises there on call. So what?
Your mic is.
Echo?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So they're they're on call in the event that something comes up that he needs to address, and they're available to him to come out, but they don't have to necessarily be present for the entire market period.
Okay. Thank you, Angie. I'm sorry. I'll catch you running out the door. Guys, I think that's it for me. And again, thank you very much for having, calling the meeting, Leanne, or inviting me to the meeting. That was my first finance meeting I think I've ever been invited to.
Thank you for coming.
Any questions by the other board members?
No, I'm still, I mean, that was a very thorough packet. I'm still working my way through it. I wasn't able to print it. So, you know, it's kind of hard to digest everything when you're just looking at it on a screen, at least for me. But I look forward to having, you know, more discussions on the, in the future to try to get 2025 kind of tightened up. And hopefully we can move forward with a healthy 2026.
Danette or Leanne, have either of you added up the additions and subtractions in column H totals? How much are we decreasing and how much are we increasing? I didn't do it yet. What I did do, though, I went through this packet last night that Michelle went through of what I proposed. And Leanne, remind me to give this to you so you can just copy just the suggestion. And we've got some, obviously, some expenses coming up. And my total was, don't fall off your chair. About $483,000. But what I didn't do to that, I don't know where you've added. I'm just, like the one I asked earlier, can we can we take $138,000 and reallocate it? I had $100,000 there. I'm sorry, I had $50,000 there. So I'll give this to you, Leanne, if you want to take it with you, just suggestions of where we can money. But I haven't, as I said, I haven't done the math yet to find out how much you've added to the positives. So we just need to do that, see if there's a difference between the two.
The only increases we've done between the existing budget and the proposed amendment budget is, of course, in the debt service. We've had that conversation, and that was a issue with them having that 20, 20 bond, 2020, 2020 bond in the utility fund instead of in the debt service. That is one of the funds that that is exceeds that 5% allowance, and we need a budget amendment, if nothing else, on that fund.
And parks and recs.
And then the only other one we've added to is, again, public works, $17,810. That is simply a reflection of the increase in revenues that we're seeing in public work. So we put some extra expenditures into that fund, possibly to get some road and drainage projects done before the end of the year. The rest of the funds we reduced. The utility fund in and of itself is reduced $128,000 from the initial 2025 budget.
Repeat that number?
$128,243.
And that's reduced, and that's reduced where?
Sir, it was reduced all over the the different expenditures within that utility fund. Shown, and these figures are shown on the recap that's in the front of your packet that was also printed out for you tonight, the black binder.
Oh, is there, okay.
Yes, sir. So and and Leanne mentioned the the park and recs. We did have to reduce that budget by almost $41,000 because of the reduction of revenue that we've seen in that fund. So that one also exceeds the 5% allowance, and we need to have a budget amendment passed on that fund. So the two funds that truly, and again, if I misspeak, I apologize, but the two funds that the board needs to take under consideration at the very least is proposed amendments to the park and rec and to the debt because those do exceed those 5% allowances.
And I guess the other thing is, is that because of the revenue shortfalls, because the revenue shortfalls, obviously, we're a little loose on the on the budgeting for 2025. Revenue shortfalls or the revenue reductions obviously have to equal our expenditure reductions. But if we're just doing that by a dollar amount, dollar for dollar, and not cutting expenses in other areas, I don't know how we're going to meet our financial obligations to end of the year.
We did cut other expenditures.
Yes, we did cut our expenditures where we needed to or where they showed that we had sort of overbudgeted for 2025. Again, that's all included in that information. I know that was a lot of data that came at you at once. But, you know, the the recap and the proposed budget amendment that we've presented to to the board not only makes sure that our budget through the remainder of the year is revised according to what the funds are actually doing, but they're also adding line items into the ordinance. So, for example, the 2025 existing budget had only one line item for the general fund, and that was general fund revenues and general fund expenditures. Now, we've broken that out for y'all so that we will be tracking much more closely the avalorum, the sales tax, and then separate expenditures within each fund. So you do, with this proposed budget amendment, you are giving a lot more oversight and to make sure that the administration is staying within those guidelines that we presented in this proposed budget amendment.
I don't want to be redundant, and thank you again for composing this package. But just one more thing, guys, when we're moving forward doing the 2026 budget, we need to have 2023, 2024, 2025 minimum, for three years, hopefully four or five years of data to show how we're trending. And now, obviously, all the line items are different from previous years versus this year, but we need to find out if we can get as much data as we can because this is hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're amending out of revenues because we didn't forecast properly last year.
Well, in part it's forecast, but in part is we're still cleaning up the actual way that we show the budget.
The system.
Which I think that we're refining it so that we can understand it better. And having the CPA on board and our staff who are really, you know, diving into the new format, I think is very helpful. I think your explanation that you've given pages and pages of what changed and highlighting why. And it really brings us along quite a bit. And it's responded to all the requests that we had for, give us an explanation for everything that's being amended. And, you know, it's going hand in hand with the budget to actuals as we've been seeing which things are trending above or below what was expected. So I think we're moving in the right direction in terms of being able to understand what you're reporting. And I think it's going to get better, but, you know, there are some things that just obviously weren't budgeted for earlier on that we had to play catch up with. So hopefully we'll do a better job with that in 2026 because you're more aware of some of those expenses.
And that's the objective, is to be more accurate. And the more we dive into the details associated with this, hopefully the accuracy will improve more and more. And it it doesn't guarantee that we're not going to be off here and there. That's, it is just a projection. It's our anticipation of what is going to happen moving forward. And in this case, I'll mention a little something about one of the things we're looking at because we've consistently had problems as Stephen Saucy just, you know, elaborated on a little bit when it came to lighting. I mean, you've been here for a long time, Alderman Saucy, and you've seen this year after year where we have deficiencies in lighting. And parks and rec, it's always been a problem. I know you've seen that as well, Alderman Contois. But we seem to have some sources of revenue that are dedicated sources of revenue, but there is an allowance for us to dedicate those to parks and rec, to take a portion of that so that our revenue and expenses are more in line with one another and we're not, you know, consistently coming up short.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. We need a history. And unfortunately, the president didn't want to go into history. We have, we've got five years of data, I'll say we. I mean, Jay has month to month for five years. I don't know how much he has compiled for 2025, if he has compiled anything for 2025. But it's just so critical. We want to be as accurate as we can. If you look at this, some of these columns, in column H, $100,000, $88,000, $71,000, $142,000, all negative. There's a huge lot, huge amount of adjustments that we're having to make in this budget, but that's why we need amended, so.
And I just wanted to get back to timing. So we're going to have another discussion at the next meeting. And then expected adoption would be at what what date, what meeting?
October 21st.
October 21st. And then we're expecting that that'll still give us enough time to get the 2026 prepared and adopted through November.
Yeah. So the requirement, the legal requirement, which we'd love to not have to be dealing with this at Christmas, but that is the deadline for us to be able to have that 2026 budget adopted by the third Tuesday in December.
Well, having just gone through this exercise, I would think that your projections would be a lot more on target. Especially taking out the big projects, which, you know, again, makes it harder to go year from year.
So just one more high-level note. Alderman Saucy, you know, had the opportunity to discuss with us about some of our reserve funds, some of our sinking funds, some of our contingency funds associated with our bonds. And we have our bond attorney evaluating that. I hope maybe to hear from him this week. You know, that was what he projected, that he would, you know, dive into that and find out whether we had some discretionary assets within those funds that we could use to do some of the sewer improvements that we need to do. And what we talked about was that the vehicle by which we would even be able to potentially get started this year would be through resolution. So those are construction in progress and capital outlay types of expenditures that normally in a utility fund wouldn't be included in the budget like this. But that doesn't mean that we can move forward with those types of expenditures without the approval of the Board of Aldermen. So we would need to bring those to you in the form of a resolution, and you guys approve the appropriation for those reserve funds to be used for specific capital outlay expenditures, namely, in this case, sewer infrastructure.
namely, in this case, sewer infrastructure projects.
And LeAnn, what was that one that we have like 80 something thousand and the payoff was 103?
That was the 2004.
We have one bond, guys, that the payoff on it is like 102, what was it, Dinet, 103, 104, somewhere up in there. And we have 80 something thousand in reserve so we could pay off that bond, help our bond rating, and it would cost us 40 grand.
Yeah, and that would also...
That was actually the contingency fund.
It was 20 grand, that's what it was.
Yeah, yes, sir. So the 2004 and the 2017 DQ loans, they not only require a sinking fund such as our other funds do, but they also require a reserve fund and a contingency fund. The contingency fund in and of itself, just for the 2004, is at a requirement of right around $88,000. And our payoff for that loan would only be $103,000. So if we got the expert opinion from the bond that that was something we could do by spending a little bit more, we could free up the money that's sitting in that contingency fund and then you would just strictly have to cover the contingency fund for the 2017, which is $250,000. Well, let me add a little bit to that because the bond attorney is also evaluating that and there's something called defisance, which allows you to pay off a loan early. And in some cases, there is no provision in the contractual arrangement or the agreement to pay off a bond early. This bond is between 5 and 6%, whereas our other bonds are at .95. So we're paying a higher interest rate on this bond. The bank might not be inclined to allow us to pay it off early. So we need to find out whether or not, you know, according to the terms of our contractual agreement, whether we can pay it off early. And those instructions will come from the bond attorney.
Yeah, we did have, we had a conference call the other day with the bond attorney. So all those wheels are turning and he's going to get us the right answers.
So the, the information on the bonds is in the packet that we'll send out to you. And so I tried to give you as much information we had currently on the bonds and what our 2026 debt service is on our existing bonds. That is important because of the sinking fund requirements and we'll assume have some discussions further on that when we talk about the 2026 budget so that we make sure that we allocate those sinking funds correctly to these debt services. And if all goes well, maybe we get the loan from CWSRF. We get some forgiveness on that and we can start doing what we need to do to move forward and not have all of the issues that we're faced with right now.
What's the proposed, or what's the expected timing on that, finding out about that loan?
I received a communication from them last week. They didn't really give me anything hard and fast, nothing concrete about when they'll make a decision. You know, it's put in a queue. I think they, from what I heard, which is nothing to count on, you know, it may be close to the end of this year where we'll begin to get some information about what priority we are.
So there's not a, there's not a time that they announce who receives them?
It's kind of more similar to capital outlay where they have, I think, these priority rankings as to who needs the money the most and the quickest.
We do.
And in addition to the bond funds we're talking about, I mean, we do have some other funds that have been established in prior years since this administration took place. It's not recommended most probably to use, like we have an emergency fund that we've been putting money into for a major project, possibly for a second water tower, but those things can be discussed, but nothing would be taken out of those funds without full discussion and a resolution from the board. Yeah. To allocate those funds to a project other than what they were originally intended for. And I'm sure the board would be very cautious about depleting an emergency fund because that's something we would need in the event of a natural disaster in the community. And I don't believe it's overfunded. It seems like it's right in the neighborhood. I think, what are we, around 300,000? The emergency fund right now has 337,000.
And how long will that last us?
For an emergency fund, we spent about $425,000 for ITA that we had to come up with and it takes, we did eventually get FEMA reimbursement for that, but it took about 18 months.
So we need to shoot for half a million.
It'd be nice.
Good on the council?
I'm good. Great meeting. Thank you for all the information.
All right, I will ask for a motion to introduce.
So may.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Well, we don't even have to do that. We're, we're good. We're good to go. All right.
It's just an introduction.
Introduction. All righty. Here we are into old business, which we have none. Now we move to the open and adjournment. EJ, if you just want to give us kind of the highlight and if you want to bring it into the, to the next time, that'd be great.
So, last time I was here, I gave the package to all the Aldermen concerning the mini-code. I've been working on chapter five, section three, having to do with sewer, of course, and septic tanks and that type of thing. And I did a bunch of line items. I haven't received any feedback on that. So I went ahead and wrote the thing and what I'm planning to do is I'm going to put a copy in every one of y'all's mailbox in their office so y'all can look at it and then maybe we can bring it up next time and vote on what we have to do to amend that particularly part of the mini-code because it really needs to be amended. So that's, that's pretty much it. I didn't bring them with me tonight. I didn't know if I'd get to bring it up or not, but, but I will do that. I'll put each one of y'all a copy of what I've done in your mailbox. And please come back to me. I hope y'all still have that first little package that I gave you. I don't know, it's got the code in it. Okay. I think that's about it, you know. I think we've talked the budget to death here tonight because, that was good because, like, like you said, we can go through this thing through the line items and come up with a lot of money and so, but I'm really interested in these muni-codes now. I think some of them need to be revised and I just wanted to start with that one.
We have ordinances that conflict each other.
Yeah, they do. They're conflicting. I'm looking mostly at ordinances 522 and 475, if you want to look at those. And they kind of overlap and contradict and everything else. So I'm trying to come up with something that will be, that a normal person could read so you don't have to be a lawyer to read it and...
422 and 475?
Yeah. 522. 522 and 475.
So I would just like to mention that we, when we address amending the code of ordinances, that oftentimes when you look back at specific ordinances, they have been amended. So to go back to, say, ordinance 300, it may have been down the road amended in ordinance number 475 and that should all be reflected in the code of ordinances rather than the individual ordinances. So when we present an instrument to amend, what we want to do is amend the code and only in certain instances amend the ordinance itself. Edward, if you want to...
No, I understand. You're correct. I mean, when you, when you look at an ordinance with regard to a point of law, you're looking kind of at a flat, just a snapshot that when you go into the muni-code or look at the whole law and the code of ordinances, it can be, well, it's been amended and updated many times so that looking at the original ordinance may not be an accurate reflection of what the current law is. I think that's what LeAnn was saying and it's a good point.
Well, I'll show you what I got. You can look at it.
Thank you, Alderman Plutra.
All right.
Stuart, do you have anything to say? Open session?
Oh, golly. Well, I hope everyone's a bit tired of me coming around and saying that you should be ready for the next election because if you are tired of it, maybe you'll lobby the legislator to consolidate all these elections that we have. Now, we have one coming up technically in October, but we get to sit that out here. It's all side L. But in November, November 15th, we have what at least to me is a surprise election because I wasn't expecting it. The REC, REC District 11 decided to ask for a renewal and slight change of their millage. And so that's going to be the one issue on the November 15th election. This is about five or six years ahead of when you would have expected them to do it, but they have their reasons. But I'm asking people to be aware that there's an election coming up, November 15th, and also to research what your thoughtful and informed opinion may happen to be on this issue. I'll give you just in brief mind though, right now, which is they're asking for a millage that's similar to the alimony that the town gets, and this is just for the REC district. And so I think it's, it's much higher than one would want and they're asking for 20 years. And just on principle, I'm against anything, any tax being levied for 20 years because the voters who do show up on November 15th, they're going to be committing or potentially committing an entire generation to paying this tax. And there should be some sort of time limit on what they're allowed to ask for. But the main thing, point is be aware that we actually do have an election on November 15th. All of Abita is inside REC District 11. And so look it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart.
Is there anyone else?
Thank you. I'm Ron Blich. We had a trailhead museum meeting and just want to make a couple of announcements on some fun things coming up in the spring. We decided to pursue organizing three different art, art-type events at the museum, starting with a seniors' talented art show of seniors in St. Tammany schools that are going to present their works and with a reception and sales, et cetera, which should be fun. We're going to have a, an art collection of Don Walden, his collection of some very famous local works of art. And then finally, Richard Scott, who did a lot of the Choctaw exhibits in the Museum of caning and things like that. He lives in Mandeville. I had visited him over the weekend with Mary Davis. He actually makes very unusual walking canes and he's going to bring his whole collection and they'll be for sale as well, as well as maybe some speakers, including some Choctaw descendants and explaining everything that's in the cases and all sorts of tools. So lots of fun stuff going on. We haven't, we're still in the organizing phase. Probably, probably in March because it's a good time for school, but there's so much going on in March. We got the Buska Festival, we got the Whole Town Garage sale, we got this, we got that. So you want to find a, and want to find a weekend where it doesn't conflict. So lots of things going on at the museum.
Are we still 2026 in it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, LeAnn.
High school seniors.
High school seniors, unless they're 35 and haven't graduated. Anyone else?
I just want to comment, I believe the legislative auditor's office can be a source of information on best practices for budgeting and for reporting for the town, the town like small towns.
Where's the, where's the world care area?
Where are you?
Oh, sorry.
They do have workshops that's got...
Yeah.
A zillion different things that run side to side. You can actually submit a paperwork, you know, side to side.
And, and as I understand it, I'm a tax partner, so my audit partners would cut my fingers off if they hear me talking about this, but they'll actually consult with a municipality or whatever. So that would be a source, I would think, of best practices when we're trying to do this overhaul.
Thank you for that. We did actually consult with them at the beginning of the year, but you're right, it's not a bad idea to just have an ongoing relationship with the Legislative Auditor's Office, you know, because CPA isn't always here and, you know, they might have a good perspective from a municipality's standpoint.
I just talked to Jennifer Shea like two weeks ago.
Oh, good.
She's so pleased for us being able to work together.
Yay.
So it is a resource that we, we do use if I have any questions. I, the first thing I do is, is go to that site and see if they have a training or a chat room or something like that to where we can get some clarity on different items. So thank you for bringing that back up, but yes, we...
There is a seminar. EJ, what's that seminar in November?
Baton Rouge, yeah.
Coming up.
November, I think in Baton Rouge at the Pennington Center.
Pennington Center, yep.
There you go. Sorry, we turned it on.
I'll probably be going to that.
She's too busy budgeting to go and take up a day.
Sissy Wigan, Abita. I'd like you to stay involved or informed because we're about to pick a new library director. Not me personally, I wish, but it's, we had a four-hour library meeting last night. There's a lot of controversy. So if you like the ability to choose your own books and you actually trust people with library degrees and you don't want books banned or hidden, I would encourage you to stay involved and pay attention. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. First by Alderman Saucy.
Second.
Regan Kontois is second.
Second.
EJ, you got to pull the trigger quicker.
I'm third.
All right. That being said, we are adjourned.